I hope so. All right, have we? The City of Waynesboro Planning Commission, it's a regular meeting this Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. Sorry, we're a little behind. We just had some issues to address. Sarah Severs, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So would one of the members like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda presented tonight.
Could I please have a second?
I'll say.
Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Everyone who's not? The agenda is adopted. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting held January 18th, 20? I think that means 2022. It says 2021 on the paper, but I think, really, I don't remember what happened in 2021. Everyone have a chance to review those minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Someone want to make a motion to approve those minutes from the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Everyone in favor of approving the minutes of the meeting held January 18th, 2022? Say aye.
Aye.
Everyone who objects, say aye. No objections? Motion carries. It's now a public comment period for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
I know of none.
Okay. Now, we're going to have a public hearing for request by Bottom Alley M L L C for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish contributing structures in the downtown historic district. The structures are the two-story commercial building and the one-story annex located at 304 and 320 West Main Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. So, staff is going to talk to us a little bit about what's going to happen with that, what the plan is.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish a historic structure in the downtown historic district, 304 and 320 West Main Street, commonly known as the Leggett Building. I think this is one of the more important applications that we've dealt with in my time here, certainly related to downtown. So, everyone knows where the Leggett Building is. It's right there at the corner of Arch and Main, located right in the center of the city. You can see that surrounding it is the Ming Garden Buffet, New Bing Garden Buffet, former Tim Spears, future site of the V and H M, Waynesboro Economic Development's across the street. So it sort of anchors that bottom intersection of downtown, it's two blocks away from us right now. And the applicant owns all of those properties from the corner there up through the Leggett Building and the building next to it. You're probably familiar with what the facade looks like. It's a former department store. And they also own this building that's right next door to it, which is, in actual, I think even worse shaped than that one. So I want to give you a little timeline and background on this property and then talk about why they've come to apply for a COA. Just for the benefit of the audience, a certificate of appropriateness allows you to demolish a structure that's a contributing structure in a historic district. This application can be approved by the Planning Commission. It does not go to City Council. So on this property, there's the Annex Building, which was constructed in 1941. And then in 1963, Mill Street, which used to cut through the middle of the block there, was closed and the Leggett Building was constructed. Let's see if we can get to the next slide. This is one of the old Sandborne maps that shows that vacated section of South Mill Street there where the Leggett Building now sits. If you click again, you can see the outline of the property as it exists now. And the closure of that street is relevant for reasons that will come up later. But anyway, the building's constructed in 1963. You can kind of see the site from the air here and you can see the remains of South Mill Street down there. If you click, I've circled it. There. Yeah, you can see Wayne Hills off in the distance. Kind of enjoy that picture. This, soon after the building was constructed, it flooded in 1969. It was the first major flood after the Leggett Building was constructed. That whole bottom section after the old mill race was filled in and the parking lot was elevated out there. They tended to do a lot of that without researching. There wasn't a strong understanding at the time of flood planes and flood plane science. The federal flood plane management regulations were not in effect. And so right away, there started to be quite a few problems with flooding in that building. This is a picture from one of the early floods. I believe this is 69 and then I think the next one might be 85. Or no, I've got it marked on here. So you have the 69 flood, followed by the 72 flood, followed by 1985 flood, followed by 1996 flood. So the building continued, would continuously flood and sustained a significant amount of water damage during that time. Eventually, yeah, again, I think this is the 72 flood. And then this is 2003, when Cycle Recycle was there. And that was the last time that the building was occupied. There have been a number of studies done trying to figure out how to mitigate the flood problem. And the basic, the basic summary of them is that we need a lot more information and a lot more money in order to deal with it. A 2015 A M T study found that the cheapest option was to do about $650,000 worth of dry floodproofing work on the building. Additionally, under federal flood plane regulations, there's a base flood elevation. And so that's the elevation of the 100-year flood plane. And currently, in order to construct a building, you have to elevate the first habitable floor a foot above the base flood elevation. So you might notice a newer building, for instance, down on Arch Avenue, would be boosted up by about four or five feet. In this case, the building is not boosted already. And so if you do a significant renovation, if you spend, you know, more than about 50% of the building's value, which they certainly would do to renovate this building, then you have to bring it into compliance. So you have to either raise the structure or somehow move that first floor out of that flood plane. There have been a number of proposals on this building for how that could be done. One of them was putting in a false floor that would raise that first floor up. So you'd go in and you'd have additional set of steps. Now that lowers the ceiling on that first floor. I mean, it's a large building. It's just tough to, tough to change the layout of it significantly. So that's the situation with flooding. But anyway, in 1993, after 30 years, Leggett's Department Store closed. The building was occupied for a little while in the late 1990s, up to 2003, by Cycle Recycle, the bike shop. And again, all they really needed was sort of a warehouse use. So the fact that the building was already deteriorating wasn't a huge downside to them, but the 2003 flood did them in as well. After that, the building remained vacant until today. In 2007, it was acquired by Waynesboro Holdings LLC, by a company out of Charlottesville. There was initially, initially some excitement, I think, in town over what they might do with the property. And they pretty quickly figured out that they couldn't do anything with the property. And their solution was to propose that they give it to the city in exchange for the city giving them some developable land elsewhere. The city obviously said, no, thank you. In 2013, the property was acquired by Bottom Alley LLC, who's owned it since, and they are the applicants today. And they're an LLC owned by Mathers Construction Company. And they've been looking into a number of different options since then for how the building could be redeveloped. From 2017-ish up until 2020, staff worked with them on a number of redevelopment concepts. Again, the cost to bring the building back into a habitable state is really overwhelming. So the plan that was put together had a price tag and it was a couple million dollars. And it was to create what's called a warm white shell, basically just a habitable structure. So it didn't even get you to tenant fit up and all the stuff you would need to do with the building. But in order to make that work, that financing needed to come up with and various environmental stuff and flood stuff had to be mitigated. So the applicant tried to put together a proposal that would work through a combination of historic tax credits, historic renovation tax credits, which have been useful on, for instance, the Wayne Theater. And then also to take advantage of the Industrial Revitalization Fund program, which is a state-funded program that provides low-interest loans for rehabbing old legacy industrial and commercial buildings. And the city actually got an I R F grant as part of the redevelopment of Basic City Beer over at the Metal Crafters Building. So the city supported their application and worked with them on putting together numbers, drawings, proposals for apartments upstairs, proposals for commercial spaces, and submitted those applications through two rounds. We worked with them in the 2018 round of I R F and 2019. And unfortunately, we're unsuccessful. And staff and the applicant concluded that, at least under that plan, that the I R F grant was not a feasible way to get financing. Additionally, during that time, we had a number of discussions with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources about the historic tax credits. And again, ran into roadblocks there. In order to use historic tax credits, you cannot alter the facade. There's quite a bit of control that gets exercised on maintaining the design of the building as it was originally constructed. You can't just use the historic tax credit and then mangle the building. Unfortunately, as, as you know, walking past the building, it's sort of the 1960 equivalent of like a Walmart now. You know, it's, it's a big box store. It's not really a building that was designed as sort of a historic downtown building. So there's no windows in the facade. It would be tough to put apartments in with no windows. It'd be tough to rehab it for commercial uses as well. So you end up having to alter the facade quite a bit. And they had a number of different proposals. We're trying to make a rooftop work on the annex. And essentially, Virginia Department of Historic Resources says, no, you're not going to be able to use historic tax credits for that. So ran into roadblocks with those as well. All that to say, we have had several years of working with the applicant. This is a building that's important enough that I think we wouldn't bring it to you if we had not done a significant amount of advanced work, trying to make some kind of redevelopment proposal work. And we've done that. So we arrived here today, 2022, with an application for a certificate of approval to tear the building down. Another wrinkle in this whole story is the existence of one of the city's main stormwater pipes. It's almost a century old. It's a very old stormwater pipe that's partially collapsed, but it still funnels quite a bit of stormwater through that section of downtown. You can see it's located underneath the building, roughly where the old South Mill Street that was vacated used to be. The existence of this pipe has created a lot of trouble for redeveloping the building, since when there's a significant water event and you have a decayed enough pipe, water starts to come out of the pipe into the building. What I've been told is that in at least one flood event, the water initially came out of the building before it reached the inside, before it came up to the building. So the city has been, throughout this time, investigating options for moving that pipe. But it involves reconfiguring, really, the entire flow of that, that area. And especially doing the work with the building existing is very difficult. In 2018, the city contracted with Wiley Wilson to study the problem and to give us an estimate. And they came up with an estimate of about $985,000 for the project to fill in the pipe and to reconfigure all of the stormwater in that area. It's a heavy price tag. The city has not been able to find a way to afford that since then. And so we're stuck in a, in a difficult situation with that pipe. Certainly to, to dig it up with the building there would be very cost prohibitive. The city did commit to do, we were able to come up with a less expensive, about a half-million-dollar version of this project that would not resolve some of the downstream flow issues created by fixing it, but that would at least create a temporary fix. And the city committed to that as part of the I R F grant, as a sort of a matching in-kind contribution towards that. But again, we were not successful in getting that grant. The best solution for dealing with the problem would be if the building was not there and the pipe could be dug up. Next slide. So whenever you tear down a building, folks always want to know what's going to go in place of it. It's important to understand that tearing down the building is its own application, that we unfortunately can't really condition it on that building something else since we don't have, there's not a mechanism set up, a legal mechanism set up in Virginia to guarantee the completion of a building. If you've ever been to Charlottesville, you may have seen the, the unfinished Landmark Hotel standing there. You know, we, we can prevent them from constructing something that they have not submitted plans for, but we can't force them to finish something or to, in the same sense, we can enforce on a building, a vacant building, that they secure it, that they ensure that it is not a safety hazard to health and human safety. But we can't make them, you know, renovate it or spend money on the property. And so they've provided us with a number of renderings and drawings. And our experience with the applicant and working with them through the I R F grant tells us that we really do believe that they are expending earnest effort to attempt to redevelop the site and to attempt to use it, use it for something else. But, you know, you can't guarantee anything with the COA. So that's all, all I have to say about that. So this is the rendering that they've provided, what they would like to do. And pretty quickly, the applicants come to the conclusion that if you're going to spend all that money on the building that would take to even get it back to that warm white shell, you might as well tear it down and build something new. If you build something new, then as you can kind of see in this, this photo, you can boost that first floor up five or six feet off of the sidewalk, which takes care of your base flood elevation and your flooding problem. And then you can locate parking down in that area as well underneath and solve sort of several problems with the site. You can also develop it at a higher density, allowing for more apartments, which will give you the scale that you need in order to have management personnel and things that you really need to make apartments work. So this is the proposal that they're, that they're showing right now. It would be a mixed-use building with commercial on the first floor in accordance with the rest of the downtown and apartments above. And they've provided some initial drawings. Again, they're not construction-level drawings, but they are, but they have, they, they are earnestly working to come up with a plan for this. And the city is working with them to apply for another state program that might potentially provide financing for the project. But again, the first step is eliminate the building. A big consequence of, of offering a COA to this building is that it's a major link in the city's downtown, you know, enclosure of the street. You know, a lot of what creates the pleasant pedestrian feeling of a downtown area is the enclosure ratio of the buildings to the street. And so if you do tear down this building, you're going to end up with a fairly large exposed area stretching from, you know, you'll be able to see Clear Cross to the Kroger. I was not known in school for my, you know, I did go to the architecture school for planning, but I was definitely more of the white paper person than the Photoshop person. So all that to say, the next, this is my rough attempt at Photoshop, you're going to, you're going to end up with, you know, a large contiguous flat area that's going to lose you some of that enclosure ratio. So that's something to be aware of. And that's one reason that I think city staff in the past have been hesitant to recommend demolition of the building in hopes that it could be renovated. That said, they want to construct a new building that will resolve that problem. And you have to weigh that sort of subconscious design element against the, the very conscious, you know, ugliness of the building as it stands, empty and vacant and moldy right now. So in the future, you know, while this loses us some critical teeth at this intersection, in the future, you're going to see the Virginia Museum of Natural History come in that will provide another element to frame that intersection. And then hopefully, once the building is, a new building is constructed, then you'll see more beyond that. So, all right, excellent. The zoning code provides a number of criteria for evaluating certificates of appropriateness. First of all is whether or not the building embodies distinctive characteristics of a tight-period style, method of construction, et cetera. The architect is not known on this building. We do not believe that it is a particularly unique example of its style of architecture, as I mentioned. It's more of a 1960s version of a, of a big box store. Secondly is whether or not the building or structure contributes visible architectural value to and provides historic continuity with properties within the same block. As I said, it does provide a certain amount of continuity in the sense of providing that street wall and also that historic style of building up to the, up to the sidewalk. That said, there's quite a bit of negative, negative value as well provided to the streetscape, as you're all aware. Thirdly, whether it's, it's of such an age, authenticity, and unusual or uncommon design, et cetera, that it couldn't be reproduced. I'm not sure that it could be reproduced, but I'm also not sure that we want it to be reproduced. You know, it definitely lacks transparency. It's a very bleak facade. So, fourth is that specific plans are available should the structure or building be demolished. And as I said, we've gotten the applicant to provide us with those plans, to provide us with what they would like to do. And they've given us a timeline and a budget. And, you know, we, we think a viable, potentially viable business plan for moving forward if the building can be demolished. Again, construction's very fickle. Things could go wrong. They might not get financing. So can't guarantee that it will not remain a vacant lot for several more, for more years to come. But we believe that the applicant has done the necessary work to provide us with a plan moving forward. Fifth is whether it's economically and practically feasible to preserve or restore the structure. We think we've done enough work over the last few years to verify that it is not. Sixth, whether the property owner can make alternative economically viable uses of the property. Again, they certainly cannot. It's a negative value building right now. A building that the cost to return it to a greenfield state exceeds the, its value as a, as a property. So, seventh, whether relocation may be appropriate. Definitely not. Eighth, whether the existing structure is suited to or can be adapted to a proposed change in land use. So those are all the criteria to consider when evaluating this. Staff is recommending approval of this application. I think, and I gave you the full history just to convey the degree to which we feel there's not another good way forward for this property. It doesn't have a lot of value as a building, and there's really significant barriers to redevelopment. As I said, it's, it's a significant impact to the downtown streetscape. I, I think losing this building will result in a big, you know, flat crater across the center of downtown that I don't love. But we think that the applicant has shown real readiness and effort to move towards a redevelopment of the site. And that I don't think you're going to get anything like that with this building still on the property. I don't think you're going to address the storm sewer problem. I don't think you're going to be able to address the flood plane problem as long as this building still stands. So for that reason, we think that that's a cost that the city is probably worth paying for the downtown. So I might have to answer any questions from that.
Any questions, Commissioners?
And the applicant is here, if you'd like to ask him questions as well.
Okay. Well, I think that we can open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing for request by Bottom Alley M L L C for a certificate of appropriateness to demolish contributing structures in the downtown historic district. The structures are the two-story commercial building and the one-story annex located at 304 and 320 West Main Street, Waynesboro, Virginia. Do you, Commissioners, do you feel the need to have the applicant approach the podium?
No, I'm not seeing one.
Is the applicant here? Do you want to, is there anything else you want to share?
No, ma'am. I think it's well done by Luke.
Okay, great. I think so, too. Okay. And if anyone else wants to approach to the podium, you'll need to give your name and address. And you can only talk for three minutes. I think we're good. I don't think anyone wants to approach the podium. Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing that I mentioned earlier. And discussion among us? I think it's the best thing that's ever happened.
Now, once the building's down, Luke, is that when the city's going to install the new storm pipe?
We do not have a, a ready-to-go plan to deal with the stormwater pipe. That'll have to be worked out during the redevelopment with the, with, with the owner.
Oh, okay.
Does stormwater run through that pipe at all?
Yes. Yes, very much so. Yeah.
But we could repair it if the owner gives us permission?
Uh, it's, it's one of those issues that you're going to have to spend some more money just to know what you'll have to do and how much money you'll have to spend. So it, yeah.
I'm assuming that it's in such bad shape, you can't pipe burst it, put a new pipe through it?
I am not sure about that. I know we do do the PVC balloons sometimes, but I know the recommendation from Wiley Wilson for this plan that I showed you was to do liquid fill through it, to just try to basically clog it and then, you know, so you wouldn't have to dig under the building. But I'm not sure what they're planning as far as to repair.
Okay.
Oh, sweet. It's great that the owner is a construction company, so hopefully they know something about this.
Thank you so much.
It is not a pipe.
Oh, it's not a pipe?
Yeah, the city actually had scoped it. It's, it's a, it's a more of a tunnel made out of brick. It's more of a tunnel made out of brick.
Oh, okay.
And the brick is caved in.
Okay.
So it's not like your sanitary sewer pipe, you can run like the sock through it. And, but it's not like that. Plus, you can't do it without the building because it's so deep in the ground.
Oh, okay.
So when you think about like life safety, working at that depth, and the trench, the access for the trench boxes and the equipment to lower the trench boxes, or being able to cut it back so you have access to it. So more than likely, the solution is to just abandon it in place and to crowd it full.
Okay.
And then you would reroute it at another location, similar to the Wiley Wilson alternative or even another part of the property.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Does anyone want to make a motion about this?
I'll make a motion that we issue a certificate of appropriateness for the property.
Could I have a second?
I'll say.
Everyone in favor of issuing a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of the structures of the two-story commercial buildings and the one-story annex located at 304 and 320 West Main Street in Waynesboro, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Motion carries.
Now, there's a place for your food trucks, Luke, when your building comes down.
This is very exciting. And we are going to move on to another public hearing for a request by Hatsland Development LLC to rezone Zero Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, text map number four dash one dash twenty-eight A from RS-12, single-family residential, large lot, to RS-7, single-family residential, small lot. And Allison, I think, has some information for us?
I do plan to. Okay, so this application is to rezone text map number four dash one dash twenty-eight A, which is a 37.42 acre parcel from RS-12 to RS-7. And this parcel is located in the northern area of the city, off of Ivy Street. It's actually located just north of the new Ivy Commons subdivision. And they're asking to rezone from RS-12, which is our single-family residential large lot with a minimum square footage of 12,000 square feet, to RS-7, which is our single-family residential small lot with a laubel square footage per lot of 7,000 square feet. Both of these districts were established to accommodate single-family residential neighborhoods on individual lots, with the main differences between the two being the lot size and then the required setbacks. So you take a look at the area surrounding the subject parcel. You've got the new Ivy Commons subdivision coming in directly to the south. You have Anna Maria Estates to the west, and then some larger acreage, single-family residences surrounding it basically on the other three sides. And this is a shot I pulled from Google Earth showing the parcel as it is today, which is basically a vacant field. And then the current zoning in this area is broadly RS-12. You do have a spot RG5 off of Anna Marie, and then to the south there, near Thomasville, and off, was it Whitebridge Road, some RS-7. So this is a drawing that the applicant provided us for illustrative purposes only, showing a potential layout for the RS-12 zoning. It shows about 66 lots that can be fit on the parcel, given the constraints of RS-12, and still fitting in the necessary infrastructure, the roads and the stormwater. It's probably unlikely that this parcel will be developed like this in the near future. There's, the applicant is the same as the one developing.
That was more exciting, too. This is the most exciting meeting we've been in a really long time.
It's quite a send-off.
I knew I shouldn't get that, I'll at least keep a good jump.
Let's see. So as I was saying, it's probably unlikely that this parcel will be developed like this, given the current market and the applicant is developing similar subdivision in Anna Marie Estates, just directly to the west. And then this shows, again, this is a conceptual drawing. This isn't what's being proffered. A conceptual drawing showing a layout under RS-7, which would give them about 40 more lots for a total of 107 lots, which is about 2.85 units per acre. And it does show plenty of road connections to the neighboring parcels and also open space. And then we believe that the stormwater basin, sort of center bottom, the larger one, is going to be a wet pond as well. And then I wanted to give just a couple examples showing neighborhoods with the RS-12 zoning versus neighborhoods with the RS-7 zoning. And the first one is just a couple shots of the Country Club area. This is RS-12. You can see the houses, not, you can't really see the houses because this is a mature subdivision with large trees, but you can see it's sort of larger lots. The houses look, are spaced apart. And then this is a couple shots of Anna Maria Estates, just newer, so you can see the, actually see the houses a little better. You can also see how there's space. And then RS-7, this is a subdivision over on Iris Drive. It's a little newer, but you can see the houses are a little bit denser. And then finally, a quick look at the Club Court area, which is an older RS-7 neighborhood. And again, here you can see it's just slightly more dense than some of the RS-12 neighborhoods. As far as the comprehensive plan goes, this parcel is designated low-density residential. And that's meant to accommodate three, four units per acre. And RS-7 is classified as low-density residential in the city, and therefore it applies with the comprehensive plan. As far as infrastructure and city services go, the underground utilities and the stormwater infrastructure would be approved with a preliminary plat once a subdivision application has been submitted, which it hasn't at this moment. There is adequate water and sewer capacity in this area, and the school system does have sufficient capacity to admit additional students, since they've had some decreasing enrollment in the past couple of years. Traffic was our primary concern with this rezoning and the continued development in this area. You have Ivy Commons coming in, continued development of Anna Maria Estates, the final phases of Evershire. And the applicant did submit an abbreviated traffic study and turn lane warrant analysis, which was revised based on feedback received from VDOT. And it was determined that a right lane taper would be warranted for this development. And sort of to sum up, approximately the same amount of infrastructure would be installed for an RS-7 development as would be for an RS-12. But in this case, there would be, if it was RS-7 development, it would be additional lots that would make that much more affordable for home buyers and then also more affordable for the city to maintain long-term. And therefore, staff is recommending approval of this rezoning. And that's all I have. Any questions for staff?
Questions, Commissioners?
And the way the subdivision is now, it's a by-right subdivision, the way it is now, the rezoning just allows them to make more affordable housing in it.
It allows them, yeah, with the rezoning, it'll allow them to add that additional 40 or so lots, yes.
And is it your understanding that the, and right now, as the road exists in front of it, 254, they could do that subdivision without having to have a turn lane or anything?
The, what's a lot under RS-12, yes.
But one of the things you're looking for, if it goes to the more dense subdivision, is to require them to build a turning lane? Do I understand it's on the right side as you're going out 254?
Yes.
So that would be on their property, but they would have the expense of building that turning lane to bring it into compliance with what VDOT requires for its roads?
Yeah, yes, what we would like to.
Yeah, under the proposed number of lots, that's what the turn lane warrant and this traffic study required.
And in fact, the property the turning lane's on would become part, would be.
Come right away.
VDOT road.
Well, the city owns. We get VDOT to give input from their local assistance division. We actually own the road. Yeah, that would be a city road then.
So we'd get the maintenance money for it?
Yes.
From the state?
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your highly informational presentation. So I would like to open the public hearing for a request by Hatsland Development LLC to rezone Zero Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, text map number four dash one dash twenty-eight A from RS-12, single-family residential, large lot, to RS-7, single-family residential, small lot. With the, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to approach the podium? Please give your name and address.
My name is Peter Butros. I live at 400 Peterson Lane in Waynesboro, Virginia.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Or anything you'd like to, any insights you'd like to share?
No, I think it's pretty cut and dry.
You haven't done a, you gave us a rough plan, but that's not a plat you're submitting, is it?
No, not yet.
So that could change from what was shown here. Once it's rezoned, then you can do a plat, really, to show what you want, anything different.
No, I'm kind of stuck on like the lower areas for the water and stormwater management. We have a connection. We have to have interconnectivity between the subdivisions to, I guess, where the Quisenberry property used to be. So we're kind of, we kind of have some of responsible, like, not responsibilities, but designs that we have to have for the Waynesboro specs. So it's, I mean, if we get the zoning, it's going to look pretty much like what we have.
And it would be limited to 107 lots?
Yeah. I think that's where we're, I mean, I think that's roughly where the number would be.
Any other questions?
I'll just, if I can tack on to that. The conceptual site plan is not a proper site plan, so there could be changes as they get further into design. But as Peter pointed out, it's, the purpose of it is to show you the feasibility of fitting lots in. And so with all those site constraints, it's going to end up looking basically like that because they'll have to have all those connections. They'll have to have the stormwater. It'll come out to about that.
But you would, I'm assuming that it's not going to be significantly more than 107 lots?
No, the point of the conceptual site plan is to basically show how many they could fit in there with all those site constraints. But, you know, as they design it and as they get a road profile in, they might figure out where they could fit an extra lot in or two, but, you know, it's not going to be dramatically more. The applicant could proffer a limit to the number of lots, but they have not done so, yeah. But the zoning puts a functional limit on it.
And of course, the, VDOT's going to require, if we change the zoning on it, that turning lane, just the one turning lane?
Yeah, they only warranted a right turn lane.
It's not anticipated there'd be any other changes to the road there?
No, they're not close to a left turn lane. There's a left turn lane required at the Ivy Commons development, just the next one south. But that was 200-some lots, so. And it was, it only just barely tripped the left turn lane warrant, so.
And of course, they could go through Ivy Commons.
Yeah, we've been trying to ensure interconnectivity between all these subdivisions so that there's an internal street network. You know, the hope is not to ever have to widen 254 like for that road. Eventually, the speed limit may need to come down as there's more development, but the hope is to create enough of an internal network that it can feed out in multiple directions, yeah.
And did I see the proposed plan also included a potential, what do I want to say, outlet to any potential subdivision or development of the property to the west of this one?
Yeah, to the east, you mean? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
To the east and behind, if I'm understanding correctly.
Right, which is not necessarily a road constructed to the property line, but it's a reserved right-of-way in a stub that could be connected in the future. So we require that with any major property that's being subdivided so that, you know, there's not always another subdivision constructed nearby. But if there is, we want that connection to be there, to be possible.
You're just asking for the consideration of a zoning change today?
Correct, yeah, this is the zoning. They have not submitted a subdivision.
We're not that far along, this is, we're in the sky.
But this is the point where the entitlement is granted. And so once the entitlement's granted, the subdivision request would be by right, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to approach the podium? If you do, please give your name and your address, and limit your speech to three minutes.
Good evening, my name's Bill Moore with Ballser and Associates. We're consultants for the applicant and prepare the exhibits before you and are happy to answer any other technical questions you may have. Thank you.
Please approach the podium.
There's a lot to take in there. I don't know if I can keep it three minutes or not, but I'm Wayne Weeks, 7020 Ivy Street. The Google Maps picture that they showed was basically from my driveway. In a three-quarter mile stretch right now, coming in 254 from the west, I guess it is, you're going to have this development, Ivy Commons. So this is 107 units, if we're lucky. And because, right in my understanding, it's a max of 7,000. So he can go in and say, oh, I'm going to do 3,500 square foot lots. Whether you think he can figure it out or not, they can, it can change. I haven't been guaranteed that that's the thing. Then we've got 230 at the next one that's not even, has a house built on it yet. Then we have Claybrook, Anna Marie, and whatever Evershire's doing over there. So that's, that's a lot of homes being built. And to say that that road's not going to be widened is foolish to me. I mean, a right-hand turn lane gets nobody in and out of there safely. I can't tell you how many times I almost get hit pulling into my driveway, being at 45 miles an hour. And I put a blinker on a half mile down the road so that I don't get hit. School's been able to handle that? I don't know if you're taking in just this 100 units, but it's, it's a lot of development going out there. And going from, I mean, I'm not saying we can't build houses out there, but taking it from 60 to 110 seems, when is enough enough? The dam is on the rest of the lot that's adjacent to that. And we all have kids, we have, you know, it's just way, way busy. And to add on to it, to change the zoning to allow for more, seems reckless to me. I mean, I just, I can't, I don't know where everybody's going to fit. And a right-hand turn lane, if we're going to already widen in front of the 230 home development, it's going to have to be widened the rest of the way. I don't, I don't see that feasible. And the encroachment onto my property for the widening of it is something that I would take a large exception to coming, I mean, across the street. I don't know how that works with who gets put where in that development. So I just, my consideration would be for you to not accept the zoning change. But I'm just one guy that owns a little bit of land in Waynesboro, so.
Did I understand you say the speed limit in front of your house is 45 miles per hour?
It is 45, basically. Once you get, once it goes from the widened area that is at Anna Marie, Claybrook, it turns to 45, and then we hit 55 somewhere outside of the city when it turns to count.
Well, now, Luke, that would be a city road, so the city could reduce the speed limit.
Correct.
On that road, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's something, but it's going to be a lot.
No, you raised a good point.
It's going to be a lot. I mean, if it was just this, if it was just taking and adding 100 homes across from me, I could see that, but another 230 that is literally adjacent to. and thirty that is literally adjacent to it, it's almost like we're adding three hundred and plus homes in, in a, in a, whatever that area is. It's not more than fifty acres altogether right there between the two developments. It's just a lot.
Well, Luke, does, uh, VDOT have a say in the final, I mean, the approval of the safetyness of that road? I mean, how, do they, do they address that as well?
No, the city owns the road. So the city's in charge of anything with, like I said, we, we run traffic studies by VDOT just for another pair of eyes and to, to get their input on stuff. Um, but we did do a study, a speed study on that road, um, very recently. Concluded that it was still safe at forty-five, but that soon as more develop, if the VMT, the, the average, average daily traffic went up significantly, that it would need to come down to thirty-five soon.
I mean, I've had cars flipped over in my yard a handful. I mean, it's, it's not like, it's very dangerous. Just driving through there and hitting deer is every other day experience for people. So it, it's, it's just a lot. So do with it what you will.
Thank you very much.
How are you doing? I'm Jason Dammer, seventy-ten Ivy Street, Waynesboro. Um, second to a lot of what Wayne said, uh, won't beat the dead horse there, but the, the traffic flow right there, um, is gonna greatly increase with those three hundred houses. Uh, we have our driveway, Wayne's driveway, another driveway. And I, I'd like for them to, um, take close consideration as to where they put that turn lane, if they have to put it, you know, not directly across from all their driveways. It's gonna make it measurable for all of us to get in and out, um, as, as well as a, a major safety hazard right there. You know, um, we, we have, as you said, we have younger kids that are driving soon or some already driving. Um, you put three hundred cars, two hundred cars, whatever it is, turning in and out there right across from the driveway is gonna be a, a major issue. Um, and I don't foresee in the distant future, um, the city coming back saying, we need to widen that stretch of road. Um, you know, that happens and, and we all lose some land right there, which is another concern. Um, you know, we, we, uh, all these subdivisions are going on, going in right there. Um, construction's already started. We are on wells and septics. So, so I have concerns with groundwater issues as well. Um, you know, don't, don't know what that will do. I know we're gonna pull a sample from ours just to make sure we know what, what our groundwater, um, parameters are right now. So that way we can see what they changed into after we do all this construction. Um, you know, it's, it's just a concern. Um, for that, obviously, we, you know, it's already zoned RS twelve, so subdivision can come in. Uh, not trying to stop that, just want the entrance to be considered. Um, you know, I, my wife is a school teacher, come from a long line of school teachers. Um, to say that Waynesboro can support that many houses in the schools right there, um, I, I find, I, I, I don't really believe it, but I'm sure somebody has numbers there on that. Um, our schools are pretty full, even with COVID stuff, as kids going back right now. So I, I don't really foresee the schools being able to handle that many, uh, new families coming into the area. Um, truly, I'll, I'd like, I'd like to see the plat once, once it gets developed by Mr. Butros or whoever does the development, just to see, um, you know, where those turn lanes are gonna go, or VDOT, if they do the turn lane drillings. So I'll have-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. LNO Hanlon, nine-nine-eight Northgate Avenue. Um, I drive that area. It's very concerning. The concern that I've not heard from anybody is, what about fire protection? You keep putting all these houses close together. How are they gonna be out my way consistently to over there if there is a house fire? And when you put more houses closer together, there's more risk. I didn't hear any consideration of that, and I think it's a stretch for what we have right now as a fire department.
Thank you very much.
Hi, um, my name is Carrie Weeks. I am at seventy-twenty Ivy Street, Waynesboro. I'm Wayne's wife. Um, as a mom and a woman, I tend to look more at the way things look. Um, and to me, first off, I'm happy that it's Butros because they do build beautiful homes. They don't look like, um, they're stick-built with, that they're gonna tumble down if, you know, wind blows. But if you head straight down two fifty-four from my house to Waynesboro and you look to your left, it is, it's horrible. It, it, it's not appealing. It doesn't look pretty. It doesn't look, those houses are two hundred thousand dollars and those poor people are right on top of each other. So as a, somebody who bought a house with acreage in order to maintain a little bit of, uh, prettiness, I, I do think that while that might seem silly, because yes, it is gonna be, um, more taxes and more revenue for the city, but it also doesn't look good. Um, so I just think that that's something to consider too, when going from sixty to a hundred and seven plus because, um, it, that's a lot of houses. I mean, I think it said three houses per acre or something. I mean, that's on top of each other. Um, and it doesn't look nice. So, um, that's something to consider too, if we rezone. Um, also, the traffic, the fires, every, I mean, it just, it seemed, it's just a lot right now. It's very overwhelming for us as property owners, cause it's happened all of a sudden. And we were like, wait, hold on. Um, but three-quarters of a mile and four brand-new neighborhoods. Anna Marie, you know, is established, Clay, the beginning of Claybrook is, but everything else is brand-new. It's going to be, um, it's gonna be something else for us on that road. The road itself is scary. The accidents, if you drive down, I encourage you all to drive down two fifty-four, you'll see crosses at each, every two miles from people who have lost their lives. And I think it's really something to consider. Even if this does get approved, something for the future to, to look at, because it's, it's, it's a lot. So, thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any bone ins or cons or anything?
Um, I have one email comment, um, expressing objection to the, uh, rezoning, just also objecting generally to the amount of developments going on in the area.
Okay.
But they didn't have any specific comment beyond that.
Okay. So I think I can close the public hearing, right? Yes. So I'm gonna close the public hearing? Okay, commissioners, let's have at it. What do you think?
I, I can just tell you what, I, I was in a meeting earlier today for other citizens in the city of Waynesboro saying, we don't have enough houses, affordable houses. We've got big houses, expensive houses, but we don't have enough affordable houses within our city. Um, and that, that's a concern, and that's something that, uh, I was with the city manager today, trying to address those concerns for affordable houses in the city. Uh, the smaller lots, the smaller, uh, houses. We'll make it so that you can get more affordable housing in the city. And that's the, the concern that I was hearing today, and I just wanted to bring that out to everybody. It's just this afternoon, we had this meeting.
So I'm hearing safety is the main, the main issue here. Um, and I certainly kinda, I live down two fifty-four too, so I understand that. Um, and I, I can't, I mean, I know you can assure me, um, or the citizens of Waynesboro, but I wouldn't think that we would purposely, if it could be avoided, set up any kind of unsafe situation for our, our citizens in that area. And I assume that that would be addressed properly as the development goes. I mean, I would trust that that would happen. It's, um, give you, you know, our city council in Waynesboro credit that they would certainly address the safety issues of that road, whatever that meant, whether more traffic lights, slower speeds, wider roads. Um, we all have to live here. We all drive down that road, most of us, a lot of us. So, I mean, I think that's, seems to be is what I'm hearing.
Well, and-
Huge safety concern.
Just, just for some of the safety concerns, we're looking at, uh, a new fire station on the, uh, west side of town. So that, that's gonna be coming this year. Uh, we're, we've gone out for bid on the fire station, so we're hoping to have another fire station on this side of town start. It'll take six months to a year to, to get it finalized, but we've got another fire station coming to this sa, town. Um, council's already discussed that. That's a priority for council is to get that fire station done. Uh, citizens voted on it back in two thousand and eleven, and it's still not complete. So, uh, we've made that a priority on our part to get that, that done. Uh, and I, I, I agree with you. I'm a fire investigator. We need another, we need two more firehouses in, in the city of Waynesboro for the amount of growth that we have. But if I can get one right now, um, that would make us a little safer and, and happier.
Are you?
Go ahead.
Are you not right now? I can tell you the term ends, amount of traffic out of our house every night. And I noticed it got cut back, and then I found out that the city rented the property out towards West End House by-
Right.
They have to be busy twenty-four hours a day just doing car accidents on the roster. So where is the projected fire?
We're, we're looking on the DeWitt corridor there. Um, the, uh, develop, or the, people that got the bid, they're looking for an ideal location to represent that side of town and our side of town. So-
We're also putting in housing buildings in that side.
Yeah.
More.
That, and that's, that's all-
And I think our fire department is stretched and to add more houses, you know, we can all assume they'll be like-
Yeah. But that, that's the plan going forward.
Uh, as far as, um, density goes, my man, yep. So.
The, uh, lot, the minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet, so that's technically one-sixth of an acre.
One-sixth.
The way that the lots work out, the, the overall density though, you're, you're correct. And, but the overall density incorporates the need for storm water and common area and roads and all things like that. Yeah.
I, I did drive out that road. I've driven it before, and I've been surprised recently because when we first moved here, seven, eight years ago, we looked at the, one of the subdivisions, uh, uh, out there, the, the smaller ones. Not anything now. And I go by now and I say, look at all the building going on. And I think that's one of the issue, one of the problems, especially for y'all who live there. I would have hated to have bought a house out there, and I might have bought one of y'all's houses. Uh, and then all of a sudden finding all this development encroaching on me. But Waynesboro's growing, and this isn't the only, you know, this is, we, we've had in the last year and a half, uh, three or four big subdivisions. I'm talking about two hundred lot subdivisions. So we have the one behind Martins-
Mm-hmm.
-that's come along. And, uh, unfortunately, a lot of those are, are ending up in your area. Uh, and, um, and there's call for it apparently. There appears to be call for it. And, uh, the, unfortunately, if, if we approve it, would require some sort of turning lane, uh, to get into that subdivision and yet allow, not bog down the traffic through there. But I'll tell you, coming out from that corner, Kate Collins School where the light is, it's completely different than even five years ago, four years ago.
Is, is there a, uh, say we, it does tons of provision that we need to play center turning lane in there. We need to make the lane free as, as the business Anna Marie and Claybrook, or the road line. It, can there be a provision that that goes to the subdivision side, like it eats their land instead of being his?
I think I, I, that was a question I asked. Is it gonna be on the subdivision side?
That was just for the right turn lane.
Okay, yeah.
If the whole road gets wide, and, 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 and he also said that they're doing a center lane in, in Commons.
We, yeah, we do not anticipate a center left turn lane here. Generally, that stuff would get constructed when the subdivision's constructed. It's really now that that kinda stuff gets decided. You know, long run, could there be a city project that would do a road expansion? Uh, it would have to be VDOT funded. It would have to be decades away. But it, I don't anticipate that there would be. Right now, Ivy Street has about seventy-one hundred, seventy-two hundred cars per day. Um, the capacity of that road is, trying to consider to be somewhere around fifteen thousand. So I don't think that you're likely, even with a significant amount of new development adding, with all the new houses out there, probably adding about two thousand cars a day, I still don't think you're gonna get anywhere close to, you know, where you would warrant a widening. So I, I think you'd just be talking about piecemeal improvements. And those would generally be done when the subdivisions are constructed. So I, I would not expect there to be anything beyond what, um, what's being built when the subdivision is built.
And plus, any expansions would be within VDOT's easement, and they are clearly spelled out on your, your deed. You'll be able to see how wide that road could possibly get.
I'm sure it's at least-
There-
Yeah.
If there was a, if there was a public project-
Right.
You know, then obviously there could be a right-of-way phase where they have to acquire a right-of-way. But I don't believe there's likely to be a public project. And there currently is quite a bit of right-of-way on the road, so.
Yeah.
But there's not, there's not like a guarantee though that there would not be-
Right.
-any right-of-way needed.
There's no guarantees with anything.
And of course, that can happen anytime VDOT wants to widen the road. They can come along and do it, do a taking, meaning they, they buy it from you.
It would need to be a city project. VDOT does not own that road. It would need to be a city project, yeah.
Oh, the city, I'm sorry.
Right, right. So that, it would need to be, there would be a public hearing, there would need to be a, a council vote on it, yes. But, but we don't have any plans for that.
Would there be an opportunity for, uh, the concerned citizens to address this in the future before?
Oh, if there was a road project, it would be, yeah, there would, it would require public outreach and public hearings and all that stuff. But like I said, we don't, there's potentially going to be an Ivy Street smart-scale application, which would be, which would go to construction in twenty twenty-eight or twenty-nine, which would be for pedestrian improvements around that area. But like I said, there, there's no plans-
So you're not foreseeing any, any-
I don't foresee any widening while I'm working here.
No, no center lanes, no-
And that's generally not the direction that the-
Okay.
-discipline's going in. But, but that's also part of why we want to encourage that internal street network to reduce that heat in the future as well.
Well, I certainly understand this. I own a piece of property in the county that you take your life in your hands every time you go in and out of. And most of the time, I drive over the curb because you can't turn in or out anywhere of my property. But the property, I bought the property after the damage, the VDOT damage was done. And again, it was a VDOT project. But I also, I'm with Bobby. We need houses that people can afford. We got, we're, we're heavy on the low end and we're heavy on the high end, and we need something in the middle. And I don't think these-
And I don't, I-
Are you buying affordable? What is affordable? Am I gonna get section eight or something?
No, that's, that's what I'm talking about. We need something that's not section eight, that's not the West End.
You, you're in that two hundred thousand dollar price range like you're seeing at, at the other two subdivisions.
Yeah.
At the cost of building.
Yeah.
Probably.
But, but I'm, that, that's affordable housing now, though.
We, we can't change that. We, unfortunately, we, we can't change that.
And plus, the growth in Waynesboro is kind of a result of surrounding, uh, localities increasing their tax rate and their revenue base. Uh, I don't know how many y'all know it, but the city of Shawsville is looking at twenty-one percent real estate, uh, tax increase on properties.
Did you see the assessments obtained now for your, in Waynesboro?
They weren't twenty-one percent, so I'm, I'm not complaining.
They're going up though, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
These sales are wild.
Yeah. It's a crazy, it's a crazy world we live in. So, any other comments? I would advise those of you with concerns, either way that this, um, zoning application goes, we don't make, we make a recommendation to city council. We don't make the final decision. I would advise you all, if you have concerns, to share them with your city council and come to the meetings when this happens. And if you have concerns about the road, bring it up with the city council often.
Will we be notified again?
Yes.
Because we got letters for this meeting.
Correct, correct. Yeah, the, there'll be a second public hearing held in front of city council, and so the same notice requirements will be met. Uh, but I can go ahead and tell you that the March, this, uh, issue will go to the March fourteenth, regular council meeting.
Yeah.
Was it voted on that night or?
Uh, no. So the council requires two readings. What happens is that it gets, the public hearing is held and the issue is considered, and then they introduce the motion, and then it gets voted on two weeks later. Um, generally though, the council tries to get everything on the table that first meeting and, so.
Yeah, and if, if, if the road is a separate issue, I- Yeah, and if, if, if the road is a separate issue, I suggest you bring that to your, your city council person as well.
Luke, let me ask you a question. I'm reading your recommendation. It says, "Staff recommends approval of this rezoning." But further up in that, it says, "Staff recommends that no rezoning be approved unless sufficient improvements are completed to provide for safe and free traffic flow to the site."
Right. When the staff report was issued, VDOT had not completed their review of the traffic plan. And so basically, I just wanted to put in there a placeholder saying, "Our recommendation could change based on VDOT's response." And so we did receive that. They confirmed, but our engineer had already said that their traffic numbers were, were correct. But I just wanted a placeholder there in case that came back differently.
Well, premature in making a decision now.
Uh, no, no, we have the study now. We have it evaluated.
You have the study?
Yeah.
And
So I said, when we
There'll be a requirement
Yes.
That there be a left turn lane.
A right turn lane.
A right turn lane, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And the right turn lane was what you were contemplating when you were saying
Yeah, the
Safe and flow of traffic.
Right, the warrant comes out and says how long a taper they need and what all that, that stuff is, based on the ITE manual. Like I said, we issued, sorry, we issued the staff report, like I said, a, a week or so ago, and just I hadn't gotten the final.
Be sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, someone want to make a motion in regard to the public hearing, request by Hats Land Development LLC to rezon zero Ivy Street, Waynesboro, Virginia, tax map number 4-1-28A from RS12 single-family residential large lot to RS7 single-family residential small lot.
I'll make that motion that we recommend to the town council, the rezoning of the property, tax map number 4-1-28, capital A, from RS12 single-family resident large lot to RS7 single-family resident small lot, based upon the recommendation of the, that, of VDOT, that a right turn lane be included in this, in the development of this subdivision.
So that will be, that will be required as part of the subdivision feature, and when they actually have a formal subdivision, they'll have to redo those numbers with the exact numbers. But that's, that's not something, you can't have a condition.
Weathers.
Are you concerned that that's, I forget the word.
It's not technically a proffer.
A proffer.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, I'll take the last part of that out.
If it was a proffer, then they would have to construct the lane regardless of if there was a change and they wanted to build a large lot.
Okay, right, right. Do I have a second on the motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All who are not in favor? Motion carries for the rezoning is stated. And we are on to the other business, commissioners, correspondence, and communication. Any other business?
I have no other business.
I would, I'm sad to announce that Sarah's leaving. She's moved, left our municipality. We appreciate your service, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you. I'm going to miss you all. Thank you. It was my honor to serve with you guys, and I love this city, and I'm excited to see the changes, and I was, it was a pleasure to be a part of that. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. And any, anything, anybody else have anything to say?
I make a motion. We adjourn this meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Our meeting